I call me to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our visitors this evening.
Thank you.
And over the course of the meeting, have been recognized by the chair to speak, please go to the podium.
Sure.
Center and name an address for our records.
Sure.
Okay. First item on our agenda is the minutes of October, I'm sorry, November 18th. Mr. Yul.
Oh, sorry.
Is that the one that?
That's the one that was announced, sure.
Mr. Yul.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 18th, 2014 regular session minutes as written.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yul, second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. We have one abstention, Mr. Fode. We have also executive sessions of that evening. Mr. Yul, when you're ready.
Okay. Bear with me, please. I guess I should sign that, actually. Yeah, I'm okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 18th, 2014 executive session minutes as written.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Prisco. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Mr. Fode is abstaining. He wasn't present at the meeting. Okay, Mr. Fode, we have the minutes of November 24th.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 24th, 2014 regular session minutes as written.
Hear a second?
Aye, I'm second.
Second by Mr. Yul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We also have the executive session minutes of November 24th. Mr. Fode.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 24th, 2014 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yul. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And we have finally the December 1st regular session, Mr. Fode.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 1st, 2014 regular session minutes as written.
Hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Take three minutes. We have legal bills for October.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for October 2014, amount of $9,396.13 as follows. Copman and Page General, $8,100.13. Copman and Page PC Labor, $1,296.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yul. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Anyone here for public comment?
Your sign.
Yeah, Bill's sign.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Joanne Rossi, and these are my neighbors, seven of them, well, six and myself are seven.
Did you give us your address?
19 Kristen Lane, North Reading Mass. I don't know if you're familiar with where we live, but we live off of Park Street to Redmond to Kristen Lane. And we're here looking for support because the Shriners in Wilmington has used their facility last year for the first time for their Fourth of July festivities. And it was, to be honest with you, a nightmare. And we went to a meeting, I went to a meeting once about them using it, and I showed my disconcern and they just basically overlooked it and did it. And then when they had done it last year, or this past year, the noise was unbearable. We had traffic that came through our neighborhood. We had the people that were in the carnival that were, you know, creeping around our yards. It was a severe safety issue and a disturbing of the peace issue. And then the takedown of it was a nightmare. They did it from 11:00 at night until 8:00 in the morning, and we had five days of hell. I have a video of the noise, a horn that was blown, kids screaming. My yard is on the cul-de-sac and it abuts the Shrineers fence, probably 100 feet where they put the rides. And it was just a nightmare. So now tomorrow night is meeting at the Shriners to determine if they're going to use this site again. And we're here looking to support for new people to come and help us so that they won't use that site again. There were many issues that took place when we called the fire department or the police department in North Reading. They said to call Wilmington, and we called Wilmington. Some people in Wilmington said to call North Reading. So we kind of felt like we were just left out to hang. It was basically a nightmare. I mean, there's a lot of children in our neighborhood. There's one in particular that isn't too well, and the house was rocking, my house was rocking, their house was rocking. You know, my dog was beside herself, these children were beside themselves. I mean, when you looked up over your roof, the debris was coming down. They assured us that there wasn't, it wasn't a fire hazard, but, you know, there was particles in my yard and my pool. People broke the fence, kicked the fence down that were going through. There were people that were in our cul-de-sac that were drinking, you know, watching the fireworks. When I did go to the town meeting in Wilmington, they had said that they would call North Reading and have them post like a, excuse me, like a horse that says "not through traffic." So I called the day before to make certain it was going to be put in place. And the North Reading police said that they didn't know what we were talking about, that that was Wilmington's responsibility. So then the next day it appeared, but they just dropped off the two horses and left, and, you know, they were pushed to the sidewalk. I kept pulling them out and putting them back, and someone else would move them, and they would come, you know, walk through our yards or stay in the circle and, you know, to cut through for carnival. But for five days, and I have it on video if you want to see it, it was a nightmare. It was so loud. And then when they did dismantle it, I called the police chief, and he said, "Yeah, it is disturbing the peace." Because they assured us after 11:00 o'clock it would be a quiet hour, and it wasn't. It went from 11:00 to 5:00, and, you know, I have an elderly mother, she had to go home. And all of our company had to leave in the yard. It was just, it was out of control. You could not listen to that horn every two or three minutes as loud as it is. And if you want to see it, it's only 56 seconds. So we're looking for support for someone to come and represent us and help us.
If you please.
If you can place it right in front of us and...
What's the time and date? It's tomorrow night?
It's tomorrow night at 6:00 o'clock at the Shriners. And that meeting is just for the fireworks commission, or Fourth of July commission in the Shriners. There are 11 other locations that they can have it at, and, you know, for some reason they're pushing to have it at ours. So I spoke to the police chief today, and he had said, you want it this way?
Yeah, please.
And he had said that he remembered, you know, there were 45, we had a 45-minute conversation, and that it was disturbing the peace, and there was nothing that he could do about it. And there was one road in, one road out, there were just so many hazards, but...
Which police?
Police chief?
Wilmington. Yes, Wilmington. Can you hear it? Now, this is not, this is not what I was expecting.
If you could point it right on the table, I think with the glare, it would be, maybe point it some, Mr. Siri.
This is my dad. So you can see my pool, you already must have seen my pool.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
How many days the carnival go?
Five. So when I called to complain, I'm dead. Hear that horn? Every minute. I was going to pull the hair out of my head. Listen.
Who's the horn?
Alright.
The ride.
Just the ride.
Yeah, I haven't been to a carnival in a while.
So then every time this ride would erect, you'd hear that, the big huge hydraulic lift. Okay, so imagine listening to that for five days straight. So when I called and complained, the man said, "Well, you had one day of rain."
That's a good response.
Play for rain, is that it?
I'm having a cookout with that, you know. And she has a small child, I mean, we have a lot of small kids in the neighborhood. And when we bought our house, you know, we had spoke to the Shriners, and they said there were two nemesis. For, I'm sorry, the Shriners Rodeo and the Shriners Circus, and that would be it. And then now we have this. And when I spoke to the man in Wilmington, the town selectman there, he said, "Well, we have a new high school, the new roof and the new turf, we're not going to ruin that." Well, I have a new house. I don't want to ruin my roof and my yard. So, I mean, we're looking for some help and support. When this did happen, I just sent the video to one of the selectmen, and I called one selectman, I never heard that.
So what were the dates?
July 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
Move closer to the mic.
And then rain date on, I'm sorry, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th with the rain date on the 6th. And then they dismantled it on the 6th. And what they, what they took a week and a half to set up, they dismantled in six hours. And if you've ever heard, I had that video too, but I just lost it. They were just like screaming in the middle of the night, you know, taking down all the metal and the metal clanging. And it went from, like I said, 11:00 to 7:00 in the morning. We did not sleep at all. My mother had to leave, my daughter, who's a nurse, had to leave to go someplace else to sleep. And so when I spoke to the police chief, he said to me, "You're absolutely right, it is disturbing the peace." And I'm like, "Well, why didn't they stop?" He said, "It's a good question, you have to bring that up."
When you say the police chief, again, you mean Wilmington?
Bergonas, his name is.
Yeah, Wilmington.
Wilmington. I called North Reading, but they couldn't do anything. They said, "Right, that's the problem." In my backyard of Fox, like, "Will you see that fence? That's Wilmington, and I pay North Reading taxes, but Wilmington's doing it, and we just don't know what to do."
So this is, this affair is run by Wilmington Fireworks Committee?
Wilmington's Fourth of July Committee.
Fourth of July Committee, okay. So it's an independent group?
Yes.
Right.
Not a town-appointed group.
But the permit's issued by the town.
Right.
Right.
And the state too, but they...
The Shrineers donated the land.
They donated a lot of the Shrineers. And it's always taken place in the center of town, like on 62, which there isn't a lot of residential houses. There's a cemetery there, there's a school there, not like our area. And not only that, which we still don't want it there, but there's 87 acres at the Shriners. I can show you that as well on Zillow. And if you look at it from the air, they're all against my yard and all these other areas that weren't used. Which they had assured me when I went to the meeting, I was up for two minutes talking, and the selectmen said, "You've had the floor long enough, we're going to do it." And they stamped the thing, and that was it.
Speaking of which.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry, you have to get up, you have to identify yourself. You have to identify yourself first. Ron Rossi, 19 Kristen Lane.
Thank you.
So the Shriners wants to know our feelings, and then they'll decide themselves whether to offer this land again for that time. So really tomorrow night's the time to stop it. Won't even get to the town for the decision. The Shriners won't offer it, and they'll have no choice to have it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So tomorrow night's meeting is just the Shriners is holding it for a butters?
Right.
It's not?
And the Fourth of July.
And the Fourth of July Committee.
And the town officials too. The town have a letter saying...
Well, they've invited town officials, but the town officials aren't coordinating it, right.
Right.
It's more for the Shriners to make a decision whether they will grant them the use of the land. Okay.
I sent each of you a copy of a letter that Mrs. McBride was nice enough to present to me. And so I sent a copy, and it is coming, it's headlined from the Wilmington Fourth of July Committee. And there's no reference of any relationship with the town at all in the letter. And they're supposed to, now, there was something, Ron, that you said, that this meeting is for the, what's their name? The Shriners to, that meeting is to determine whether they're going to allow them to use that? Okay. I didn't get that out of the letter, but, so this is really a conversation between them, and then you're able to listen and then, you know...
They sent the letter to all the butters. Last year, I actually was omitted from that list, and I don't know why. So when I showed up at the meeting, they said that I couldn't even speak. And then I had to pull out my iPad and show them exactly where my house was, that I was in a butter. And then they let me speak for the one and a half minutes. There are 11 other sites that they could conceivably have this carnival at, or even have a carnival somewhere in the fireworks someplace else. They're looking at that, but...
No, no, go ahead. I just want to be acknowledged, so I can ask your question when you're finished, sorry.
So they're looking at that to see maybe even to split it, but we don't even want that. I mean, these carnival people came, they had beers, and this is the best part. There's a...
Noise.
The noise level and the quality, I hate to say it, of people, I don't know if they're quarryed, I don't know, these transients are walking around, I have little kids in the yard at a cookout. And the fence goes behind my house, but it ends, it just all of a sudden ends. So when I went to this meeting, I had brought up a couple of points as far as having the horse put out to not have through traffic. And I asked them to put like a fence up so that you can just walk around the fence and you're in my yard. And they said they'd put a snow fence up. So the day that the rides went up, I mean, they were extremely tall, it's Fiesta shows. So the day the rides went up, I had called and I said, "Where's the fence, the snow fence?" So they put the snow fence up. It was this high, and everyone's walking through just trampson on it. They, and they were like, "Oh yeah, we're only doing it because it was in the nose." They had no concerns of safety at all. I mean, there was, somebody kicked a fence, there was these people in my yard looking at my pool. I mean, it's a private yard. So, and we had no recourse. I mean, other than the fact that, you know, whoever I called said, "Yeah, we'll take care of it," or "Don't worry about it," or "It's not going to be the next year." But they told me it was, so...
Just a quick question, Ms. Rossi. You mentioned 11 other sites, is that, who was that identified by, the 11 other sites that they could have it?
The Fourth of July Committee.
Oh, so they...
Right. And I spoke to Mr. Perlman today, he's like the grand pooper at the Shriners, and he said to bring anybody. He said, "The more the merrier, and the more support we have, then, you know, there's a possibility that they're not going to do it here." They're looking at AFCO, there's a lot of places in Wilmington that they're looking. And the police chief himself had concerns, because as I said, there's just one road in there and one road out. And he said, you know, it wasn't really the way that it should have been handled, the way they handled it, so...
Actually, a question for town administrator. You haven't had any discussion with town administrator from Wilmington on this subject, I assume?
I have, yes.
Oh, you have?
Yes.
Is that something you could share tonight, or do you rather not?
No, no, I'm glad to share it. This was an issue that was brought to my attention upon learning that the residents had received this notification. I would note that the, no one in the town, to my knowledge, received a notification of the meeting taking place. So we found out about it through your contacts with the police and fire departments. So first, thank you for reaching out to them and reaching out to them as soon as you received that notice. We did our due diligence to understand what was happening and come up to speed on the issue. And I requested, and was able to arrange a conference call today with the town manager and the police and fire chiefs from Wilmington, as well as myself, the fire chief, and a police lieutenant as well, to discuss the matter. And obviously, everyone here is aware, this is something that is permitted and authorized by the town of Wilmington, which limits our capability to compel or otherwise restrict what happens in Wilmington. However, I can tell you that the comments generally from the town manager were that Wilmington was committed to working with North Reading to mediate and manage any of the concerns of the residents. I did not push that conversation to the point of relocation or not, because I know that you have many things that you would like to say yourselves directly to the Shriners on that particular area. But I expressed that we have significant concerns of the impact that it would have on North Reading residents, and it already has on North Reading residents as well. I did ask for view of the call log. Was identified that we did not have calls with regard to public safety concerns on July 5th, which was the day that it happened, here to North Reading. But I'm gathering that there were calls that were placed to Wilmington expressing concerns, and apparently an extended conversation with the police chief.
45 minutes.
As well. So what we're trying to do is to get, to make sure we are on top of the issues and concerns that you have. We will have representation at tomorrow night's meeting with the Shriners in the form of both the police and fire chiefs who will be in attendance. I personally have a conflict, and I'm not able to attend myself, but I sure will speak with them later that evening to find out how the conversation went. I did ask with regard to the matter of other alternatives that have been evaluated, and in today, for purposes of today's discussion, the town manager indicated that the committee had looked at alternatives, but that he believed that they had identified that this was the most practical alternative. Now, it sounds like the committee has said otherwise, that there might be other alternatives, which again is probably another reason to share these concerns with regard, with the Shriners. But again, thank you to the residents for speaking up. I know that a number of the selectmen were contacted as well and briefed me right away. But we will, in terms of the permissions, just to lay it out if it's not clear, the Shriners will need to grant permission to the July 4th committee to have the event there. The July 4th committee would then need to petition for what I believe is a special permit under Wilmington zoning. And I think some of you were invited to a hearing last year for it. And then that permit would need to be granted for the event to take place. In terms of the critical fireworks safety matters, the Department of Fire Services through the state fire marshal's office reviewed the site. They have already made a determination for last year's event that the site was considered to be suitable from public safety standpoints. I do not believe that they make any determination as to viability and concerns of the impacts outside of a particular buffer that they're required to use, which is probably where, technically, based on the location of where the fireworks are shot off from on the site, you're basically diagonally across from them. But it does not appear that there would be an immediate avenue for the fireworks to not be shot off there from the fire safety standpoint. But I do know that the fire chief here in North Reading, Chief Warnock, was made aware of your concerns and was prepared to put together a plan to address any safety concerns here if need be. I know that was a lot, so, but that's what I know at this point.
Mr. Prisco.
I was just letting you know that she's asking to be ripping it.
I'd just like to say one thing. When I went to that meeting for the special permit, they had a plot planned out, and they didn't even have me on there as in a butter, which meant my house wasn't even on the map. So when I gave them my name and address, they're like, "You're not even on the map." And I was, you know, one of the first six or seven people that moved into my development, and that's why I didn't receive an abutters letter. So when they made the schematic for the fireworks to be shot off, that was in consideration without my house even being there, without Nancy's house even being there, which is at the end of the cul-de-sac, which, you know, I can show you, but you don't need to...
If you could provide me a copy of whatever you have?
Yeah, I mean, they showed it to me, and then they just said the fireworks would be shot in the opposite direction. Well, unfortunately, that's the video, but the fireworks seemed to be, looked like they were being shot into, you know, up in the air, and they would come down near our house. And I'm sure, you know, it's an illusion at some point, but there was, you could see this stuff that looked like, you know, burnt debris or cardboard and stuff that was in our yard and in our pool and whatever. But I'm sure, like, they may have the safety issues covered, but there's nothing you can do about the sound when fireworks go off.
Right. I do not disagree.
But the five days of noise was way worse than fireworks.
Right.
From the carnival.
Yes. Mr. Prisco.
I'm Joanna Shaver, 18 Kristen Lane. But that's really the biggest, you need to understand, it's five days of a carnival, all day, the noise, the horns, all day, right next to us, abutting at, five days. You can't sleep, you can't, you can't have a party, you can't have people over, you just have to understand, that's the number one. So, you know, a fire hazard, a fire tuck, you know, would we like the fireworks someplace else? Of course. It's the carnival for five days, abutting, the yard.
Sure.
You know, that's just, it's, you can't live that way.
What?
Nancy also abuts right next to it, yeah.
So clearly the carnival, by virtue of the video, is, I don't want to rank the concerns, but it's very high on the list, maybe number one.
It's number one, yeah.
Is there consensus that that's number one?
It is, it's number one, the carnival.
So with regard to that particular issue?
Noise and safety, yeah.
So with regard to the noise issue, I can't speak to the safety issue because that carnival was inspected by the...
The noise issue.
Sure. The carnival was inspected by the Department of Public Safety and cleared to operate, obviously. But in terms of the noise issue?
Off the chart.
What I want to convey to you is that I said to the town manager, "Look, I'm expecting that there'll be a presentation at tonight's selectman's meeting here, and I'm going to share any additional concerns." That will be something that I will stress to him before tomorrow night's meeting.
That is number one from all of us. We're all in agreement, and we need to make sure that, and you understand, if somebody says, "Oh, it's a Fourth of July fireworks show," it's not. It's five days.
Mr. Prisco.
Thank you. No, I was going to recommend, Mr. Gilberto, that we have our chiefs get up to our neighborhood and walk our, walk their properties, if they give approval for them to at least, so they can just take a look at it, and then they should go over to the Shriners area and look at where that setup is and review it from a safety standpoint. We have the carnival in town here at, at St. Trevor Park, we go through a lengthy process, and we make sure, our police chief has done a fantastic job making sure things, you know, safety is taken care of, and that's the quarry checks, which I think you brought up earlier, which is a great point. We need to make sure that our residents are not impacted because of, we don't know what the process they use over there, and I think we need to have chief to chief interchange on this. The sad part is, we may not have the ability to stop it, but if anything, we should do whatever we can to put all the safety features in place, especially the noise thing. They, there's a lot of property over on that shrine, there's no reason it needs to be in the backyard.
And you think about where we hold our house and the park, and where they locate when they do have amusement rides. They're kind of in the center, you know, so there's a buffer around.
And I think you have that same opportunity on this site. If we can't stop it, we should at least influence it to be moved to an appropriate area that has a limited, or at least a less impact on the neighbors as possible. And then we got to really fight for the timing, what time this thing ends. That's a big thing we need to be part of. So I'd like a chief to chief discussion, if that's possible, from down to town.
Mr. Fode.
So I'd be shocked if they weren't doing quarries on at least the carnival employees, which is one thing. But I think the big concern as far as safety goes, you have thousands of people who you can't do that to, right? Because they're just visiting for the night, they're paying their fee, and then they're, they're doing whatever they want. And like you said, your properties are that close, and I can tell you, the snow fence isn't going to do anything as far as keeping people out.
Right.
So they're going to, they're going to make their way into it if they want, so I...
But what we could do is to limit traffic.
Well, I agree, the problem is, is the location of the carnival will allow them, you know, the way their property is abutted, they can actually cut through right, right behind their properties.
I was going to actually have, there was another suggestion I wanted to bring up, was maybe we should look at us funding our police officers to be on our streets, blocking our streets, so no one can come down them. Is there more than one street to get access from?
No.
Which is really...
No, just...
I don't, it's something, Mr. Gilberto, for you to maybe talk to the chief about.
The chief's recommendation.
Yeah. I mean, I know it's not in his budget to have an extra guy on that evening in that particular area, since it's such a busy evening for us. We have, we run, I don't think we run it five days now, I think we're two or three days, but nonetheless, it's a busy time. We should, we should at least consider that as well, to try to give them a little, because that's a, that's a big issue. When you have strangers going through our neighbors' yards, I have a real big problem with that. And Wilmington should respect that, and they should do whatever they can to stop it as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll try my best to be at the meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Hi, it's Nancy Pastore. I'm 21, Kristen Lane. So I do have small children, and I think the one thing that was really annoying was that even with windows shut, AC blaring, the music was deafening. Like, my house was like shaking. And, I mean, I couldn't get my kids to go to bed because it was like, it was like I was in the club, but like in my house. And, you know, the fireworks scaring my kids because they were so loud, and they're literally like right over my house, like that's where they blew them off. So, I mean, it's, it's not livable conditions. Like, I need to leave my house for those five days. Like, I couldn't live there. Like, I couldn't live through that. I could go outside. We couldn't go outside, it was so loud that it wasn't enjoyable to be outside. Like, that's not how someone should have to live. You know what I mean? Like, this is a residential area, they should not be allowed to have that kind of noise. So, I mean, that, those were some of my concerns, also the security, like you mentioned about the fact that, you know, there's a lot of people, there's really no, like, the fence doesn't cover the whole area so people can cut through. And I have small kids, so I don't want strangers in my backyard. And, you know, we had people on the street, like she said, they were, you know, drinking out front of my house, right out front of my house, you know, cars sitting there. I mean, it's just, it's just not appropriate. It's a residential area. I mean, they really need to, and they said it was going to be one year. See, that's the part that's really upsetting to me, is that they said this is a one-time thing, and now they're back again. And this is going to, we don't do something about it, it's going to be the next 40 years in my backyard.
Yeah, definitely not, they're definitely going to move back. It says, in the letter, it says they're going to try and move back to the high school in '60, and they're not going to...
They're never going to move back.
Not on a, not on a charter.
No. So I think that's what's really upsetting too, is that they came across like, "Oh, it's just this one time, and now here they are back again." And I just feel like our hands are tied because it's not our town, so we have really no say.
Mr. Yul.
Yes, I'll be attending that meeting tomorrow night. You know, there's an issue of trespassing here as well, I mean, that's a big issue, and fear of the children, and all the things that you have explained. Now, now we're talking about putting our police there, adding a cost to the town, so it's kind of rippling over... it's kind of rippling over onto our side of the government. It'd be nice if we, if we have to do that, that we probably can, should be able to bill Wilmington for those charges.
Well, some we have to discuss.
On that Wilmington, the commission.
The Fourth of July.
The Fourth of July Committee. But that being said, and I think Mike alluded to it earlier, is that the first thing that I was thinking about, that yes, we need to have a police presence there to prevent the trespassing, to prevent people from cutting through the woods and coming onto your property, and alleviating that doubt that you would have as a parent, that you don't know who these people are. Usually, nothing would happen, but you only need one thing to happen, and that's, that'll be terrifying. So, you know, I'm going to attend that meeting, you know, be there to observe, to take in as much as I can, and to add to dialogue for the TA, any of my observations, so.
Yeah, the only other thing I was going to mention, if I could, is that I'd be curious to know what the incident rate is when they've had it in the center of town, because I've heard they've had some incidents, like, either with the carnival people or whatever. Like, you know, I don't want that in my backyard. I don't want some child molester or whatever. You know, like, that's just not acceptable. So, I mean, it just seems like it brings a lot of problems along with it.
No one should have to go through what you're going through.
Mr. Prisco.
How many evenings do they do fireworks? Just one?
Two.
It's two evenings?
But.
Do I have to go back up there?
Please, I'm sorry, yes.
You asked the question, so I didn't know.
No, you got me. The people at home can't hear.
No, I'm joking, I'm only kidding.
No, it's okay.
There were supposed to be two nights. They call it a family night of fireworks and a town night of fireworks, but thank goodness, on the town night, on the family night, it's the smaller of the fireworks, and it rained that night. It was a Thursday night, so we didn't have to endure the fireworks on the Thursday night. But that answers your question. But I just want to tell you the one thing that I do, when I called the town manager, I mean, he did say to me, he assured me that he wasn't having it in Wilmington anymore at the high school because of the roof and because of the turf. And then when I did speak to, again, to the police chief, he said that they had a lot more calls than usual because the neighbors were complaining, and that all his men were out, and there was nothing he could do about the takedown, which, after enduring this for five days, 11 to 7, you just, my mother, my mother's 84, and it's a sin. How many more Fourth of July parties, which I have, which my neighbors come to, which I didn't have, which I won't have next year if that's the case? It's a sin. I mean, I've been living in that house for, you know, 20 years, and it shouldn't change our lifestyle like that. So that's why we need your help. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, Rick Schaefer from 18 Kristen Lane. I just want to talk a little bit about the fireworks, even though it was only one night. You know, I don't know if you've ever Googled shrapnel from fireworks, but it's bad stuff, and it's, it ignites things. That's what it does. It comes down and ignites fires. I talked to Bill about, you know, Bill Warnock at the Fire Department, and he was kind enough to offer a fire truck on our street that night. But it seemed crazy to me that we're offering a fire truck to put out a fire that we can prevent tonight and make sure it doesn't happen. The normal prevailing wind during the summer is the southwest wind, and that comes right into our neighborhood. So they're firing off their fireworks, it's coming into our neighborhood, it can ignite anytime, so that means, you know, my wife and I go away, you know, I was going to get up here and talk about other things. We go way farther forth, you know, down to my family on the subshore, but now we can't leave because we know all this stuff is going on. So, again, I echo their request, and please, please come to the meeting. We need, we know all the help we can get, okay?
Well, you know, I think for all of you that are abut the area, it's important that you be there and express your concerns. Town administrators ask the fire chief and the police chief to be there, and, you know, they'll communicate with the police and fire from Wilmington. Mr. Yule has said that he is going to attend the meeting. I may be able to attend the meeting, and if I can, I will be there.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm going to try myself.
And, you know, all that we can do at this point is to convince the. The Shriner's, yeah, sorry, that this is not a good thing. And they, you know, this might be a more important meeting than anything else, because if they say no.
Right.
Then certainly the Wilmington Fireworks Committee is going to have to go find another location.
And where I go for fireworks, I mean, this is a half-mile buffer zone. You can't go within that zone because it's too dangerous, and we're 200 feet from these people. So I really don't know how it's safe. I don't know how it's safe, it doesn't make any sense.
Then I would suggest that, you know, pending the outcome of this meeting and where the Wilmington Fireworks Committee in the town of Wilmington decides to do, and it ends up being there, then we need to step in to try to mitigate.
Also contact state fire marshal.
Yeah?
Yeah, we'd probably do that. That would be great. Is that something I should do tomorrow before the meeting?
No.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I do know that the chief, after being contacted by yourself, did engage in a dialogue with the Fire Marshal's Office with regard to this issue. He was able to determine that, again, that permitting was, was in order for the event, for the location taking place. I think it, if there continues to be a concern, and it's something that we want to have examined again, I'm sure that we could request it, and I would encourage that we request it through the fire chief, but based on the initial feedback, it didn't sound optimistic that that was going to change.
Yeah, and whether Bill had an idea of the proximity of our houses.
Sure.
Relative to where the fireworks were being shot off.
Sure.
Because we're basically at ground zero.
Right.
Mr. Yule.
I think, I'm going to speak for myself, my suggestion would be, see how the meeting goes tomorrow night first before, I don't want to put the cop before the horse and make more issues. I mean, the Shriner's may hear, you know, all your issues and decide that they don't want to take it on, they want to be a good neighbor, and decide not to, not to allow it to be held there.
They were for a long time.
So, and then, you know, and then if that doesn't work, then I think we kind of regroup and figure out where we go from there. And again, like the town administrator said, maybe it's through Chief Warnock, contact the state fire marshal. I don't think it should be us, probably should be through the fire chief. But I think, based on whatever he's saying here, you know, we support what you're going through, and, you know, we'll do it at weekends. I actually work till 7:00 tomorrow, if I can get out early, I absolutely will be there. So I'll see if I can change a meeting.
And we appreciate the support, and maybe what we can get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman.
You mentioned coming by and actually seeing our lots before the meeting, or is somebody going to be able to do that?
Well, I asked the town administrator to discuss that with the chiefs, to see if that was possible at all, at least get, at least get up there to the area.
Exactly, I thought that.
Get familiar with your properties, or so.
Yeah, somebody could see just how close.
Where it's abuts this area.
Just how close it really is.
If there, we could do this after you finish speaking, if there's a resident who would offer their yard as a place that we could maybe walk through, look at the property and walk back.
Right, we just can't go on private property.
Yeah, would you want us to just write that down in the hand or two, in a piece of paper?
That would be great, yes.
I'll do that.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on, we have some visitors here from Reading, Mr. Light. And we'll be on program. Who is speaking for Reading Light this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Colleen O'Brien, manager for Reading Light. Thank you for having us. With me tonight from Reading Light, we have our Director of Engineering and Operations, Hamee Jafari, Jane Parento, our Integrated Resources Manager, and Brian Smith, one of our project engineering managers. RMLD has made much progress over the last year in transitioning from a reactive to a proactive utility. Using utility standards and best practices, we are aligning ourselves to meet the future challenges of the electric industry. As part of the past budget process, we provided a six-year capital and operations plan as a means of providing transparency. This past spring, we completed a cost of service study and unbundled our rates to further show transparency and to be able to effectively track our pass-through power supply costs versus our operation and maintenance costs, and to ensure that our budget to actual on-expense remains on target. Tonight, along with a plan to provide you updates, hopefully twice a year, if you would agree with that, my staff and I will cover some of the current areas of focus at RMLD. I'm going to start first with a mission statement after we get up and running, I think. Oh, that's okay, thank you.
I started gene here a little while.
Mr. Ser, maybe while we wait, could I just bring up one thing real quick? I just want to thank you, I didn't have an opportunity to reach out to you directly, but during the time when we were trying to get the new telephone poles installed on Park Street, you know, with our new high school.
Yeah.
I worked with several of your folks, and I did send an email to you directly, but I just wanted to publicly thank you and your staff for really stepping up and helping us get those out of our road prior to, well, it didn't happen right before school started, but it happened that week, which helped a tremendous amount. So they were wonderful to work with, everybody took my concerns seriously, and they all responded wonderfully, and we couldn't thank, thank them enough for all their efforts, so I just wanted to publicly do that.
Half the town, too, with the traffic backup before the poles were removed.
Yeah. It really, it drove the town people, were very appreciative of RMLD's response. So thank you. I figured I'd get that while we had a few minutes.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'll pass that along again, and Brian's here from Engineering, and they work with that.
Yeah, they were great.
Mr. Yule.
Yes, I also want to give you some kudos as well, since we're on it. You know, we had a microburst a few months ago, and my area of the West Village of North Reading was hit pretty hard.
Yeah.
And you responded very well and very quickly on your end. Interestingly enough, I had some damage to some trees on my property, but one was hidden, and this huge branch was hanging, but you couldn't see it because of the leaves. So once fall came, there was this branch hanging right over my line into the house.
Right.
And when I called, the response was so quick that I really did appreciate it, because the winds were picking up that day, and it was just kind of hanging there precariously, so I appreciate the quick service by RMLD.
No, it's definitely a true benefit of municipal utilities.
Why is there?
To be able to live in a territory that has, puts a two response time in the.
So thank you. Let them know.
That's why I don't mind, I had so many problems, I just went to Apple. Solved that problem. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Oh, that's okay. So anyways, if it's okay with everyone, then, so at least like twice a year, we'll come and do updates.
Agreed.
Because we'll have like.
I think we'd like that a lot.
A lot of challenges and changes that are on board, that are coming up, and so I think it'd be a good idea to just give you updates and have an opportunity to have that in the discussion period, if you guys have any questions or anything. We're the third stop, we've done Reading, Springfield, it's our third stop, and then we do Wilmington next.
Can you mention the carnival? Can you mention the carnival to them? We'll shut the lights down.
Shut the power off for them.
The lights at the Shriner's.
Just make sure that this Ferris wheel is, you know, make sure the people are off it for us.
Exactly, no horn, get that horn.
Do you do all of Wilmington? You do all of Wilmington, it's just?
It's half of Springfield, I think.
Half of Springfield.
Half of Springfield, okay.
P V E Light does the other half.
Can I need the that one, do you?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, just close it up, yeah. Excellent, perfect.
Okay, oh, thank you. Okay, so in this presentation, we're going to go over quickly the mission statement, the organizational and reliability studies that were, have awarded recently and have already started, our LED streetlight program, tree trimming, and charge station, and commercial rebates. So the mission statement, the RMLD is committed to provide excellent customer service, including competitively priced electricity, as a result of diligence in the areas of power supply risk management, system reliability and flexibility, and overall business efficiency. I'm not sure if anyone had a chance to see our annual report this year, but our, we went with be efficient, be green, and go paperless. And so this was the first year we did not hand out annual reports, everything was done online. And so we're trying to, you know, have that, those models work through our whole system, our employees out into the utility electric system itself, and it's going quite well.
Oh, yeah.
Hard to see. But trust me, we're the lowest, lowest rate in the state. Right there.
It is, okay.
We can give you a copy.
We have it.
If you got it emailed, okay. So that gives you some of the lowest rates in some of the IOUs around, and you can see Reading is consistently in the lowest. And I'm sure you all heard what some of the IOU increases would be. I do want to caution everyone that transmission and capacity will be going up in 2017 and 18, if you have any questions on that. Jane can answer those. As part of our transparency and doing, you know, the unbundling, because all power supply is pass-through, so we took that out of the embedded rate, and now it's separate, so that we can definitely see that our revenues are covering our operating expenses, and our power supply is being covered as well. We are trying very hard to, through the six-year plan, to give the towns proper notification if we are, if we do need to have a little bit of bump. But compared to what the IOUs are having, the last 4%, 1.3% after not having one for many, many years, it still, again, keeps us in the lowest. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Hamee Jafari, who's going to discuss some of the reliability and one to our studies.
Good evening. I'm Hamee Jafari, Director of Engineering and Operations, and under the reliability, there are two reliability indices, as you could see on the slide, that basically all the utility industries, they're measuring the well-being of their system. One is duration, and the other one is frequency. Under the duration, there are two indices that we measure. One is the system average interruption duration, SEDI. We're sure you see the SEDI trend from 2010 to 2014, and KD from 2010 to 2014. KD stands for Customer Average Interruption Duration Index. These are all measured in minutes. The system average interruption duration was 31 minutes, which is well below the national and regional average. And KD was 63.8, which again is well below the national and regional average. The next slide is the safety system average interruption frequency index from 2010 to 2014. And again, for the year 2014 was .49, which was well below national and regional average. The other chart at the corner, just the pie chart, shows the causes of the outages by type. And as you could see, about 32% were related to equipment, 40, or about 19% to wildlife, and 35% to tree-related outages that were caused by those.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
That's any outages at all? So in the case where you say a vehicle, so if a vehicle hits a utility pole and you get a couple of, you're just, you're talking any outages whatsoever?
Yeah, any outage, right.
Okay.
That is correct.
So, whether it's one customer or a hundred, you know?
Well, it's usually when the pole gets hit, it's more than one customer.
Right.
And, you know, the major roads, the main roads, they usually take down the circuit or could be taking out the transformer, which is feeding several houses. That is correct. The next slide is the organizational study goals, which basically is a long-term study, we're doing a 20-year study in order to develop a roadmap for the next 20 years. We're doing the current, we're evaluating the existing or the status quo, and we compare it against the benchmarking practices and values in the industry, the best practices in the industry, do the gap analysis. And these are the goals of the study, basically.
You do that internally, or you have?
No, this, we've hired a consultant, there are two, for the organizational study, Lidos is doing that, and for the reliability, Booth and Associates, they're both very well-known and respected consultants in the industry, especially, both of them, they've done a number of projects, hundreds of projects, in municipals and IOUs, basically.
Thank you.
Industry. You're welcome. So, organizational study goals, the long-term goals, basically, they're there, as you could see, we're doing the succession planning, career development plan, and performance appraisal process, again, doing the gap analysis, reviewing, evaluating the status quo and comparing it against the best practices, and based on that, we're going to develop a plan, strategy for our approach, in order to meet the organization needs as well as the skills and our workforce they need to have to meet the future demands of the industry. Any questions? The next one is the reliability study, and again, the same thing, this is identifying a 20-year work plan, and it's going to develop a roadmap for the future as far as the automation and system capacity, substations, feeders, and also, it's going to evaluate the overall system losses and providing, combined with the organizational study, they're going to provide the roadmap about the skills, the set of skills that our workforce they need to have in order to meet the future demands in our industry. These are the reliability study goals, basically, they're listed down, and as a part of that, that also be evaluating our GIS system. The GIS system hasn't been really updated for the past four, five years, we're going to bring it up to date, and that's the one that is going to develop, help developing the engineering models for doing more accurate studies, as well as the distribution management system and automation and everything else, outage management system, these are all related and dependent on the GIS, accurate GIS. And as a part of this study, we're also going to fix the GIS system, basically, in order to be able to do future studies.
Quick question on your GIS?
What, I'm sorry?
Just a question on the GIS.
Sure.
Are you having a flyover, or is that what you're doing of the towns that you service?
No, but the GIS, they've done the flyover, so we know where the assets are, plus now with the Google map, pretty much everything is, we know where everything is. We need to bring the asset, as a part of the asset management strategy, we need to make sure we capture every asset on our, every single pole in our service territories.
Okay.
And once we do that, then the system is going to be brought up to date, and from there, we can transfer to engineering software, which is going to give us engineering model for load flow, and doing engineering studies, as well as the outage management system, future outage management system that we're going to have. And some of the distribution automation, which we're going to have automated switches limited on the streets for fault detection, isolation, and restoration, which is pretty much the trend in the industry for the next 10 or 15 years.
Okay.
You're welcome. The next slide shows how these two studies, they basically merge together, you, on the left, you've got organizational study, and on the right, you see the reliability study. They're both assessments and analyses, they're going to be, they're going to be merged, and the one on the reliability study is going to provide the long-range plan, on the organizational study, it's going to compare it against the industry benchmarking, and it's going to provide organizational options, and then they're going to provide a report of what direction we need to take and what strategy we need to build in order to make sure the demands of the future are met. Any questions?
Mr. Quirka? Where do you attack innovation or try to find efficiencies in your process?
The both, the efficiency, both in organizational study and the reliability study, they're both comparing the efficiency.
So, that's what's getting studied on both sides of that?
On both, on both sides, yeah, they're doing. On the reliability end, we're looking at what are the best ways in order to save, and some of the programs like demand site management, which Jane is going to talk about, the demand response, time of use, these are the steps that we take in order to make sure we are saving money for the ratepayers. And on the organizational side, we see how we can improve processes and procedures in order to do a better job, be more productive, and be more efficient. And those two, they're going to be compared against the best practices in the industry to see what are the things we can do in order to improve other process and procedure, business process and procedures, moving forward.
Okay.
Any other questions? Now, I'm going to turn over to.
I just want to add one little thing about the reliability charts and indices that Hamid went over. These indices are used across the industry, okay, and different utilities do them different, differently. The comparison numbers are there. I just want you to know, Reading Light pretty much picks up every outage, because we're not picking them up just to be able to show you reliability indices, we're picking them up so we know what the problems are, so that we can focus on fixing them. So, if you notice, you know, the tree trimming is an issue. So, because it represents a large, we looked at the tree trimming, where we reworked the RFP, we sent it out, we looked at how can we make this more efficient? You know, we don't want to roll trucks back into the same area three times, you know what I mean?
Right.
We want the cycle to make sense, we want the, a good price for cutting each span, we want a master arborist out there so that they can deal with the tree wardens, and everyone be able to work together. So, all the lessons learned from the existing tree contract will put into the new one, and that's how you gain some of the efficiency. But we're focusing that as a priority because of the data that we took.
Right.
So, some utilities like the IOUs, they might not record it if it's less than maybe a minute, 30 seconds, whatever, we have to pick it up. If we have transformer fuses that are melted, we want to be able to pick it up. So, it's more of input to the maintenance and everything, that we're, maintenance programs that we're developing, and where to funnel the money and how to prioritize it. So, it's just a little bit, same standards, same indices, but we're actually stricter with ourselves, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Goldie. Also, I want to add, you know, we've implemented seven maintenance programs to our system in order to make sure we maintain the reliability at its best, so, thank you.
Brian Smith, Engineering Project Manager with Reading Light, talked about the LED streetlight program. So, we've started a LED pilot area in all four towns, about 20 lights per town, all those lights have been installed, we're using a Cree light. In North Reading, you have 50 watt, 100 watt, and 250 watt hypersonic sodium lights existing. For the pilot area, we're trying to change those out with a 25 watt LED fixture, which is about a 70 watt equivalent. And then you also have 400 watt floodlights, replacing those with a 93 watt fixture. We did meet with the town managers and town administrators before the process to go over the locations, that was before Michael started, he was a previous town administrator.
Quick question?
Yep.
On the, so, you picked the Cree light, is that what you think you'll use when you do the whole program, or you'll go out and look at other products?
That's what's out there for the pilot, so we put that out there to look at that, and as long as it's successful, we'll more than likely stay with that.
Do the Crees have the ability for any changing? I, we, I, just, you know, I did a 1600 streetlight change out in Chelsea, and we used LeoTech, which allowed us the ability to go from 25 and up.
Yeah.
You know, three, three different settings.
These are a fixed outage light, we wanted to try to keep it simple, keep the cost down, so we'll have a.
So, you went 25 every place?
That's what we're trying for the pilot, to see if it's bright enough, the comments that we've heard so far seems to be.
Yeah, I mean, mostly, especially when you go from HBS, mostly, I think it's more about the color than it is about the outage.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah, for the variable fixtures that you're talking about, so I'm not sure the price in the LeoTechs, but I know the Crees, it was, you're looking at about $140 a piece for the fixed light to over 200 for the.
Yeah, I think we're around 250.
Yeah, for the variables, there's a significant cost difference. So, North Reading, the lights that we have up there so far, the 50 watt replacements are on Country Club Road, right in front of the Hillview, well, right opposite the Hillview, sorry. The 100 watt replacements are on North Street in front of the Hillview. The 250 watt replacements are on Main Street, starting down by Park Street, coming north, there's probably six or eight lights coming up that way. And the floodlights that you have are all at Town Hall, there's three in the back parking lot out here, and then there's two in the front on North Street. As far as action items, I kind of talked with the town administrator about this the other day, but something we don't have to do right away, but we're looking at the existing lights that are shut off, trying to determine what's going to be done to those.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Uhl?
Yes. A few years ago, we had the Energy Conservation Committee, and I think we had a very good relationship with the RMLD, with Piscopo?
Joe Billick.
Joe Billick, thank you, thank you.
Joe Piscopo?
Yeah. I was going, I was going phonetically.
You were tied, probably, to this hell of a name, so.
But we are restarting the committee, and we want to have that relationship with the liaison.
You're tired, Goldie.
I know that, I know that.
Is that somebody else?
Yes, that would be great, so I can talk to you or work through the TA and go forward on that. Because one of the things that we did a few years ago is that we put some lighting in the town, that, some of the light, not these lights, I guess, but we put some lighting, yeah, these lights, and we got a, we got $50,000 from RMLD on that, and so, you know, it was a savings source, very nice.
There are still rebates available, and I think Jane's going to touch on that a little bit.
Great, great, Jane, okay, then we can continue that later, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is, we're just, we're looking for feedback on the lights, so we have an email address set up, rmldledpilot@gmail.com, so anybody can email feedback on the lights to that.
What kind of feedback do we want?
Whatever.
I'm not, what kind of feedback?
Not light enough? No, bright enough, too bright.
Safe money?
They flicker.
That's all I care.
Yeah.
It's a safe money.
So, now, moving forward, when we complete the pilot area, we're looking at a full LED implementation over the next three fiscal years, starting in FY '16. The total conversion cost of 3.3 million. We did receive an LED grant, a $250,000 grant, $125,000 to be split between the four towns, specifically for LED lighting, street lighting. Just the estimated savings that we're going to see after we complete the full conversion, RMLD is looking at approximately $60,000 a year in maintenance savings, and we won't have to go out there to change the bulbs anymore, they have a longer lifespan, saving over 2 million kilowatt-hours a year, and estimating the towns are going to see approximately a 30% savings on their street lighting bill. Yep.
I'm concerned about the 30% savings on the town bills, on the streetlight bills. If you're going from, in some cases, so, the number you use on that is 25 watts at all, at all of our streetlights, to get the 30%?
No, that's a more conservative number. We looked at the 250 being replaced with an equivalent 250.
Okay.
So, it could be more than that.
Right, and again, I think you're being really conservative with the 30%, because I'm at 51% right now, and.
It's not going to be quite that much, because we did have to come up a little bit on the base rate to cover the cost of the fixtures.
Right.
But that's a conservative number, hopefully, so.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's great. And by, don't take the fact that I said I think it's going to be higher, I think, I think it's great that you're being conservative, but I think you probably might experience a little bit more.
Hopefully, that's the case.
So, is your plan, when you roll out LED lighting, that attached to each lamp that we're paying for so many kilowatt-hours of electricity to power the new LED lights, is there some kind of a rider on it associated with paying for the lamp housing itself over a period of time, is that?
It's built into the base rate based on the lifespan of the light. So, there's two components to the streetlighting rate, there's a fixed monthly rate and then the kilowatt-hour charge, so the part where you're going to be seeing the savings is that kilowatt-hour charge, because that's going to be greatly reduced.
But the base rate is going to go up?
Jane, you move.
Can you, Jane, can explain the other part of it? Yeah, the way that the streetlight works right now is, historically, when we had our unbundling and we have the cost of service done, what happened was, we went to a formula rate. Part of the formula, the state allows us for municipal lights to go to a formula rate, which is our average cost of energy. So, that rate right now is 12.88 cents for all of your streetlights, and it's just on kilowatt-hours. In order for us to do the LED pilot and recover the costs, we have a base cost associated with each type of bulb, so whether it's the 25 watt, the 93 watt, or I think there's four different light bulb fixtures that we're going to be doing, we'll have the base rate, which includes the capital cost, the installation cost, the cost to put the light up, and as well as any maintenance associated with that. So, that's a fixed rate, and we just take that number, file it, and we divide it by 12, and every month, you get charged per light bulb for that fixture. And then we have the kilowatt-hour rate portion of that, which would be on the reduced kilowatt-hour consumption on the LEDs.
That's why the percentage will be. So, I guess the question I have, Mr. Chair, a few years ago, well, eight or nine years ago, the town made a decision to shut down a number of lights. Were you replacing the, were you the ones that are active?
We've had some discussions with your town administrator, and the police, the police chief is going to be reviewing those.
Okay.
And our recommendation is, especially on the main streets, if the light's going to remain off, we're going to remove the light, because it becomes an issue when people think that the light's out, and then we send a trouble man out. So, in order to improve those efficiencies, there'll be a final determination on those lights, and then we'll remove the fixtures, so there won't be no confusion.
So, Mr. Gilbert, my suggestion would be is, considering the fact that we have a 30% savings, I think we may want to look at maybe turning some of those back on in areas where there are issues, and I agree that we should take any down that aren't going to be used going forward, and if we decide to put them back up, it's not that big a deal later on, but I think we may want to take that 30% savings and look at turning some of, some of the lights that have been shut down back on, especially in certain dark areas. But that's my opinion, I think it's something the board ought to discuss.
That would require a review of all of those that have been turned off in the locations.
In my, I think my suggestion would be, and this is for, my suggestion would be is probably allow them to, and you can, you can tell me operationally if this is not the right thing to do, but I would say, the ones that are active, replace all those, someone do a survey, an audit of the town, you know, at night, figure out where we need to put them up and not put them up, and then at that point, you know, it could be another additional 20 or 30 or 40.
Yeah, I think there's a significant number of streetlights that are out, so.
Yeah, I would think it's like, percentage-wise, probably what, 30 or 40%?
I thought it was tied to that.
Is it?
No, it's 40.
I thought it was 40%.
The conversion is three years, so, as we stated, that we have some time to make that decision, we are using the existing arm, so, you know, if you take it all down, we don't want to put it all back on.
Right.
So, making a good decision, and, you know, one of the efficiencies is typically, it's 120-foot span between poles, so most utilities will put a light up every other pole.
Right.
So, you know, you wanted to save 25% or whatever, I was telling the administrator that, you know, in a previous town, they wanted a 25% discount, and I just washed the glass and reduced the bulb size, because I knew I was going to go to an LED.
Right. Right.
Because I knew that if I started shutting off lights, people would be upset. I was amazed when I got here that you haven't had any problems with that, but going forward, you've got to remember, we're going to be using the same arm. And I can let Brian speak more to this, but you have how many subdivisions? You have subdivisions where there's lights that are on ornamental fixtures, or you would have to remove the whole entire-
The pole.
-pole and everything, so those are the-
About a hundred of those.
But that was, that was stopped probably ten or eleven years ago, they, actually, RMLD didn't allow subdivisions, they had to use cobra heads.
Yeah, all the underground subdivisions are cobra heads.
Right.
But it's a fiberglass pole that's fed from underground, so there's nothing else on the pole other than the light, so if you take the light down-
Oh, no, I see, all right, I see what you're saying, all right. I thought you meant as far as conversion goes, as far as changing an ornamental light to an LED as opposed to an overhead cobra.
No, this was just-
Just cobra.
That's a straightforward change of, this is just the ones that are shut off.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So just to speak to the issue of the LED lights, and we've had a couple of conversations between the Public Works Director, myself, and the representatives of RMLD, the plan after the last conversation and subject to the discussion at this evening's meeting, was to have the Police Department review the lights that are currently off, with an eye towards identifying areas where there are lights that could or should potentially be turned back on, and again, potentially phasing that based on the timing of what is going to be done over a multiple year period. With regard to the underground poles, we certainly had a concern with leaving just an aluminum pole up without anything on it, so that again, was some, an area where we were going to delay that to the later portion of the discussion, as a means to gauge the effectiveness of our plan for the earlier portion, which will be easier to do in terms of turning the lights back on. So I do think that this is going to be partially a kind of, I don't want to say trial and error, maybe I should classify it as we'll be reviewing on an ongoing basis the effort to turn the lights back on.
So Michael, are you saying that that review will be done before the LEDs are put up? The only issue I have with that is that LEDs, like I said earlier, is it's a different color light, you know, HPS is more of a yellow light, whereas an LED is a white light.
Sure.
You may later on realize that you don't need a light where you currently have one because of the, or you may not turn it, you may not need to turn it back on.
Sure, for discussion purposes, we had discussed that we would do that, provide the information to RMLD before they started the first phase, that was the intention on my end in terms of working with the public safety officials, but if there's a sense that we want to see the impact of going to the LED first with the lights that are on, and then have the second wave be any of the lights that are turned off being addressed, we could certainly handle it that way to address that concern. I know one of those-
Unless they feel differently, I don't know, I mean-
I mean, they've been very cooperative, they've indicated that they really, I think, want to do what's in the best interest of the town in North Reading. Not to speak for them, but-
Thank you.
Any other questions of the-
Just on the cost, I'm sorry, just on the cost standpoint, and maybe you're going to address this later, but you talked about over this interim period, the cost is spread out, you just divided it by twelve months, is that what you said?
It's an annual rate, and so your monthly charge is just the twelve point two of that.
So you're going to do this over the next three to four years, you're going to try to replace all the streetlights, and you're going to continue with that same formula, and then associate it with the cost to change all the streetlights through the whole town?
It's a filed rate, correct.
And when would that end, do you project? You would recoup all your costs so that, that little fee would go away?
Well, it's based on the lifespan of the light, so it's-
Also will never go away.
...twenty-five years, so they're assuming that the light's going to last twenty-five years, and by then, assume we'll have to replace it with a new fixture.
So the, so the rate includes a future replacement as well? Gotcha. I'm tracking with you on that one. Okay. Last question. You had mentioned there are some decorative lights that are out there in our town that you don't support, is that what I heard, or did I misunderstand that?
You have twelve or thirteen decorative fixtures in the center of town by the fire department, and those are LED light, and that those are owned by the town of North Reading.
And so if we wanted to replace those to an LED, we would have to go out on our own and acquire the, that equipment and then have you install it?
That's correct, yes, or you would have to install it.
Hard to that. Okay. How many, you said?
Fifteen. Twelve or fifteen, somewhere in that, it's a small number.
Thank you. Sometimes you realize in those lights, though, the cost of, the cost of the conversion, it'll take you, you know, fifteen years to recoup them.
Yeah, that's, I'm figuring that's going to be the case.
Give you back to me, most of the tree trimming-
Thank you.
...
The next one is the tree trimming maintenance program, as Colin mentioned, and as you saw in the previous slide, we have, most of the causes, the origins were the equipment, which we have initiated or implemented, seven maintenance programs in order to address the equipment. And the next one, the next big part of the child, part of the fight, was the tree, tree maintenance, tree-related origins. We have a bid out currently, and we've got a bid responses, actually, we're ready to award a bid to the successful, responsible, responsive bidder this week. It's going to be recommended, and then after the board approval, obviously, that's going to be awarded. The tree trimming program, it's a three-years cyclic program, and we have three crews, we requested three crews for three sections, we divided our service into three sections, and each section, the section is going to have a tree cyclic program. We're going to do the main roads first, and then we're going to go back and do each cycle in a, in a year. The budget for that is six hundred and forty thousand, the method that we're using, it's the conventional method of directional trimming. We are proposing cutting back the radius from five feet to eight feet, and the reason for that being because of the enormous tree-related incidents that we've had, and this is going to be more cost efficient. If we cut back more, we don't have to revisit some of the areas that we've done in the past twice in a year, with exceptional rain and the history that it's had. We're also going to pre, and this is not going to be done until we submit to the town the IVM, that's the Integrated Vegetation Management Plan, which is going to address the right of ways, and also the distribution vegetation management, which is how we're going to cut the trees around the distribution feeders or distribution lines. Also, as part of the same contract, we're addressing the hazardous tree removal plan, and we have a plan for that, that there is a master arborist on the staff of the new contractor, they're going to evaluate the trees with the cooperation of the tree warden, and each town, tree experts, just to make sure that we address every single tree and its health before we remove them, yes?
Yes. What does O W stand for?
Right of way.
Right of way, I'm sorry.
These are the right of, electric, the distribution and subtransmission right of ways, but we don't have subtransmission right of way in North Reading, these are basically the right of ways for the-
Mr. Priska.
So most of the trees you're mowing and cutting are in the right of way?
No, there's mostly there on the roads, on the distribution, distribution systems.
Are there any in residential homes that you have to mow, and then you go in to seek permission?
No, residential, we're not going, doing, cutting anything residential, it's a private, the trees on private properties are the responsibilities of the owners, and if they're approaching of a line, we're just going to cut the section just enough so they don't interfere-
And you don't need their approval to do that?
And for that, we're going to knock at the doors, we're going to let them know-
Yeah.
-that at the time of the tree trimming, but there are, there's also website, on RMLD's website. If the residents, they go there, they see a tab that says tree trimming, and at that, for each town, we have the map of the area that is planned for the month-
Yeah.
-to be trimmed. So the residents, we encourage them to go to that website, use that regularly, that's going to give you the idea of where the tree crews, contractors, they're going to be for that month.
I've seen that. Have you had any issues, or any resident in town have any, take any objection to what you're doing?
We haven't had anything, and we haven't received any.
Okay.
And like we said, the tree trimming, cutting back from, cutting from five feet to eight feet, that's not going to be implemented until, as a part of this tree trimming bid, the contractor is supposed to provide IVM. By law, we have to provide IVM to the tree warden, for every community. After that plan is developed, and then we're going to pass down to the tree wardens, and after that, we go, we would like, we're proposing to go from five feet to eight feet, which is going to be substantial cost savings for the rate payer, for us, for other operations, because there are, as I said, I sent a letter to town administrator, to all the town administrators and managers, addressing the areas that we had concerns, there were some areas that we had to revisit for twice in the same year in order to keep up with the maintenance, and that five feet certainly, it's not enough. And most utilities in the nation, they do ten feet, we've got IOUs, you know, N-Star and National Grid, they go back as far as ten feet, we are being a little bit conservative, so we go eight feet.
Do you have the capability of putting a notice in the bill, the monthly bill, of those areas where you're going to be doing cutting? Have you thought about that?
We're hoping that, you know, we're hoping that this program will eliminate any, because that's going to, now, we have a certain budget, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, if we want to send notices and start it, then that's going to cut back from the-
So they're trying to use the website?
You're sending the bill out, so I'm just asking if you have the capability to put a notice and print it right on the bill, so.
That's one option, the other option would be door hangers as they go up on the streets.
No, I wasn't suggesting door hangers, you know, in the interest of cost, right, getting the message out, there's a website, but people do get a bill once a month.
A lot of people are paperless, so, I mean, again-
Well, when you go paperless, we'll deal with that, but-
Oh, they are, they're already doing a job.
Where we're trimming in the bill cycle is not going to line up, that's why we're doing it on a, on the website, so at any moment, that's updated, but the cycle for the bills wouldn't, it wouldn't correlate, and then it'd be like, well, my bill says this, I didn't open it for a week, but they were, you know, it-
I'm not trying to add more cost to your process, but we do have a local weekly paper that maybe you can have a little section in there each, you know, month or week, that you can at least put it in the paper, so people can see it that way, is another option.
Well-
Not everybody in town gets it, but I think majority does, so.
We've just, of all the problems that we do have, we hadn't had a problem with that.
Okay.
So we're trying not to fix anything that isn't broken, we've got a-
That's why, that's why I asked the question.
-gracious plenty to fix.
That's why I asked the question.
That's why you're on that side of the table, or I'm listening.
We haven't had any-
I haven't heard any, and that's why I asked you the question, so I'm okay with you leaving it the way it is, but Mr. Chairman has some concern, there's another option.
I just asked, Mr. Chairman? If you'd like to go ahead. Okay, yeah, how do you determine when you're doing the tree trimming, whether the trees on private property or not, and there's always that cusp, I would think, because when I called, they asked me, is it on my property, and I'm looking out, and I'm saying, well, I don't know, because I know twenty-four feet from the center line is supposed to be the borderline for my street, for private, the distinction between private property and my property, so I had to go out and measure it.
Our representative has gone over the GIS-
Right.
-and also the accessors map, the ones that the trees that they're on in question, also in cooperation with the tree warden. Pretty much the tree wardens, and, you know, they know which tree is, every month, that plan is being reviewed by them, so if there are any concerns, any private property trees that are identified or they're in questions, they're going to resolve.
But is there a, an official, is this an eye thing, or, you know, by eyesight, or is there an official borderline here on the trees?
Well, there is not really defined line, that we, what we go, like we said, we go with the maps, with the information that we have. If somebody's disputing that, then we're going to have to really do more investigation. The only way to determine exactly where the property line is and where the borderline is, if we have, if we have the survey, you know, and obviously, that's going to add more cost in order to go and survey every single house in order to find out which tree is where located, but mostly the trees, based on the maps that we have, they're located, you know, they're located from, you could tell from the GIS and accessors map, whether it's in town's property or it's in private property, and the ones in question, they can be consulted with the tree wardens, they know, for a little bit more investigation, they could do that way to determine whether, you know, it's towns or-
So, so the, the distance from the center of the road to the, to the property, to the abutting property to that road, as I indicated before, on Park Street where I live, it's twenty-four feet, that must be what the GIS is working off of, no?
Our GIS and the accessors map combination, that's how we can tell. It's not really, I wish there was a better way, more accurate way that I could tell you that, you know, yeah, this is definitely on your property or it's town's property, but we just go with the information that we have, we have. Unless if anybody has any more accurate, better way of doing it, or any more accurate way of determining, like what I said, the most accurate way is just by, by the survey, if there are the, if the information, accessors maps are correct, which more than likely, probably I would say eighty, ninety percent should be accurate, so we go by that. In order to be hundred percent accurate, the only way you can do is just by slot surveying, or if the owners, they have the survey map of the property. That's like, if we haven't had any problems yet, right? So if, this is the only case that works.
Yeah, let's, let's not fit, let's try, let's not try to fix something that's not working.
Michael? Just to go back to the issue of the scheduled maintenance for tree trimming that RMLD will be doing, we will be adding a direct link to their website on the Department of Public Works webpage, so that as they update it real time, our residents can go and see where they'll be trimming. Again, we know a lot of people look at the website, there is an effort underway to update the content on the website over the next few months, and ultimately transition to the new platform that was budgeted in this year's budget, but in the meantime, we are going to continue to, we're going to put that, we're going to install that link, it should be done this week, and the public will be able to go and see real time on a month-by-month basis where the trimming is happening. I think that we included a copy of the map, I'm not positive, but I'll circulate that to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You will.
Are you through?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought you had a question, sorry.
No.
Thanks, I just have three quick slides about some of the fun things that we're working on. As you're aware, our sales have been going down through efficiencies and the economy, weather, so we're always looking at, and that's our source of revenue, so we're always looking at ways that we can increase our kilowatt hour sales, and one of the new, new things that we're looking at is charging stations. A large customer in Wilmington has installed, or is in the process of installing by the end of this month, three dual charging stations for electric vehicles, those are going to, per the direction of the company, they want the employees to use, to pay for those as they use it, as opposed to being a service that the company is providing to their employees. So customers will swipe a credit card, and they'll be able to charge their electric vehicle while they're working. Analog, and in conjunction with RMLD, applied for a grant through the DOER, and we were successful in receiving fifty percent of the charging station's cost, or for approximately ninety-seven hundred dollars. And like I said, those should be commercial by the end of this month, so that's kind of very exciting.
That's fair.
In addition to that, we actually have a pilot rebate program for both our residential and our commercials, as well as municipalities, if there's an interest there, where RMLD will offer a fifty percent rebate capped at fifteen hundred dollars per charging station to any resident or commercial customer who wants to install this. On the commercial side, I believe there's still grants available, we have another customer that's moving into a location in Wilmington, and they're going to be installing- and they're going to be installing four more electric charging stations. And they have applied and received the grant. On the residential side, if there's any customers viewing this, and they have a charging station in their garage, or they have an electric vehicle, if they could contact us, there's an application on our website, and that we just need a copy of the invoice for the charging station, as well as if there was an electrician used to install that, and we'll rebate up to 50% of that. So we do, we do have a couple of customers in Reading, and there might be a few in North Reading who could take advantage of that. And so we recommend that they go on our website. As Commissioner Yoel had spoken earlier, RMLD does have commercial and municipal rebates. We have a lighting rebate currently, where we're offering rebates for more efficient light bulbs, primarily LED lights. That's the new technology that's appealing to a lot of customers. There's some significant savings there. So for municipalities, for lighting alone, we could rebate up to $15,000. I know currently, we're working with Wayne Hardaker, I believe?
Yes.
At the North Reading High School. One of the engineers in my group is working closely with Wayne to look at various proposals, even relating to the high school and other projects. We also have a Commercial Energy Initiative rebate, and that's the $50,000 where, if you're looking at HVAC, compressors, motors, anything related to that, our engineers in my group will work with you to determine what the peak savings is for that, and then we'll develop a rebate associated with that to incentivize our customers to reduce our peak. As Colleen had mentioned, in 2017, 18, capacity and transmission are going to be five times more than what we pay now on the capacity side. So to just give you an idea, right now, we're paying $3 a kilowatt a month for capacity. That's going up to $15 per kilowatt a month. And that's based on that one hour in the summer when we peak. So we're trying to structure our rebates, so that if we can work with our customers to reduce that peak, everybody saves. And so we have a two-fold approach to that. We have the Commercial Energy Initiatives, where we'll rebate the specific project. And then we also have a voluntary demand management program, where we'll work with the customer to identify efficiency measures, whether it's load shedding, increasing temperatures on HVAC systems. And then we'll share some of that profit. We share 50/50 with the customer, so depending on what the rate structure are, the customer will take 50% of that savings, and then we'll keep the other 50%. So all our customers benefit from that. And so that's on our website, and if there's any commercial municipal, I know, I know a different engineer that works with me has been working with Wayne, and he's very excited about the potential with the building management system at the high school and the ability to be able to curtail. So we're looking forward to working with the town of North Reading in that form of the program.
Mr. Misery?
Mr. Prisco?
You was, as you know, we're building new schools.
Yes.
We finished the high school portion, now we're going through the middle school. But the parking lot isn't complete yet, and it's still, there's still going to be a lot more final work that's going to be done in that parking lot. It'd be, I was curious if maybe in your discussions with Wayne, if they could talk about them putting some charging stations in that parking lot?
Okay.
Thinking out in the future. But do you have a program, an incentive program for municipalities, for us to work with you? Can you provide those free, or is there some type of program you could at least consider in the future for us to consider going to electric vehicles? Because we're looking at capital all the time, and we're buying gas vehicles.
Yeah.
Traditional gas vehicles. But I'd love to see us move towards electric vehicles, but then when you start looking at all the municipal miscellaneous equipment you have to purchase to go with it, this may be helpful for us.
It could be, we'll work with you, depending on the scenario. Just like with the commercial customer we worked in Wilmington, they didn't want to own it, so we own those charging stations, and we charge the rate to recover those costs. So there's no capital outlay for them. There's other businesses, like if you have restaurants, they might want the charging stations as a marketing enhancement. So come eat at our establishment and charge your electric car for free. And so that would be tied right into their service. So there's, there's numerous ways that we can work collaboratively to fit the need of each specific customer. Does that answer your question?
It does, but, you know, for us, I mean, we don't have a program in town yet.
Okay.
But this probably could stimulate some of that thought.
We'll reach out to Wayne and see if there's something that we could-
We should, we should just think about this year or next year. We should really think about 10 years, 15 years. Parking lot's going to be there for-
Right.
Hopefully 50 years or more.
And there is grant money, there, there may be grant money available that could help defer some of that cost.
I think we should take advantage of this opportunity. But I think as a municipality, when we're going through our capital, and Mr. Misery, Mr. Fode, they lead that effort. And, you know, maybe there's something, I'd like you to offer us an incentive for us to maybe include that thought-
Okay.
-in our decision-making for when it comes to capital.
I'll take that back, thank you.
I think we asked enough.
Is that it, or do you want to say something to wrap it up, or?
Sure. Thank you. If you think of anything else, questions, just send me an email or-
It's much appreciated to, to inform the board of, you know, what, what you are doing. You're a key part of our municipality. And we're certainly welcome to come back every six months.
Yeah, I love that idea.
If that's what you like to do, I think we'd like to see you.
Okay, that would be great, so.
And let's hope we have a great winter and no major outages.
No, we have to pray for cold and sales and-
Well, you have it now. No snow.
Thank you again.
No snow. Thanks for coming. Oh, this is it. Is that me? I'm going to head out. You got it. Well, we have to sign, damn it.
Yeah, but some of these... So, on the appointments.
Oh, yeah. So we just have appointments to sign, sorry?
Yeah.
That's great, yes. There may be an email on that that I can find, Joe.
You'd have to designate an area.
Yeah.
Very strict to those questions. Are you ready?
Put me along with that. Okay.
See if we can be as efficient as possible.
I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman.
Wouldn't this deal go?
It's okay, he, he wanted us to take over, so we're good.
All right, so you will be, Michael will be the delegated second.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make it easy for town administrator. Mr. Fode?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vigil license to expire December 31, 2015, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Captain Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, Shawna Donuts, Ginger Gourmet, McDonald's Restaurant, Puppa Gino's, Raya Store, Lobster Claw.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In one absence, and two absences, actually.
Two absences now.
Yeah, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vigil, all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2015, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ginger Gourmet Restaurant.
Will you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31, 2015, subject to all regulatory department requirements. East Gate Liquors.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31, 2015, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Tadashi Food Shops and Raya Store.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff Michaels, the designated second, just-
Okay. Got it.
Make it easy.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class 1 license to expire January 1, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Bobcat of Boston, Inc., Brian Duchek, DBA National Sales, LLC.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class 2 license to expire January 1, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Duchek, DBA National Sales, LLC, PNT Auto Sales, Mika, Inc., DBA Route 28 Motors.
Second.
I'm going to recuse, recuse myself from the Route 28 Motors, because I've done business with them.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? And Jeff, you're accusing yourself?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
One abstention.
Did you get that, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class 3 license to expire January 1, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Duchek, DBA National Sales, LLC.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following lottery license to expire December 31, 2015, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Metro Town Car.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco.
I'll hand it to you, Jeff.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31, 2015, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Puppa Gino's.
Second. I bought a pizza there once, Jeff, should I recuse? I was thinking the same thing.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was too busy laughing, I think I abstained, I don't know what I did there.
No, you voted in favor, don't worry. Pepperoni doesn't-
Is that it, or?
Take those, remove those three.
Yeah, now we have appointments, Mr. Chairman.
Did you sign this?
I'm going to have to go through them, because I don't, I missed some.
Okay.
It's okay, we forgot three signatures, we're good. Yeah, you're right.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Do you want me to rub this stamp?
No. This is easier than the pile of it.
Mr. Chairman, with appointments?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following names for appointment as associate member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31, 2017. Jennifer Platt, 8 Hidden Pond Lane, she's incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to nom, to place a nomination of following names for appointment, for reappointment as members of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2017. Well, hold on, there's a problem, because it says one opening, and there's two names, and there's two, so I'm just going to avoid them.
It's two openings.
Okay.
I believe it's two openings, yes.
It's two openings.
Martin Weiss, 53 Brassi Way, Timothy Allen, 6 Tarbox Lane.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fode, second by Mr. Prisco, there are two openings?
I'm almost certain there are. And I would recommend that we modify the motion just to reflect two instead of one.
I do.
So as amended?
Did you get that, Michael?
Yes, sir.
So on the motion?
Aye.
You said it?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following names for appointment, reappointment as members of the Hillview Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2017. We have seven names here for three openings.
There were three turning?
That's a standing, yes, sir.
Does that sound right?
Yes. But, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, there's several members, and they don't all come up at the same time.
Of course.
So there's three incumbents that are up now, but we also have-
Oh, then it's three, two and two, yeah.
People that have filed those, the citizens that care, so they're on there as well. So we can consider that as a board if we wanted to make a change.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Correct, we should do a roll call vote.
So do you want me to read all seven names and do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Francis Hashi, 7 Wyoming Ave, incumbent. John Collins, 23 Tower Hill Road, incumbent. Charles Karucci, 3 Chester Road, incumbent. Paul Dorsey, 10 North Ridge Drive, new. Brian Blackwood, 8 U Lee Park West, on file. Mark Chrysos, Fomentus Palm Lane, on file. And Vincent Ragucci, 167 North Street, new.
Will you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll have a roll call about your prepared, if you have. Mr. Yoel?
You have to pick three names.
For one, two, or three, no more than three.
Three names.
Chuck Karucci. Vincent Ragucci. And... Mark Chrysos.
Mr. Fode?
Oh, me, I'm sorry. Francis Hashi, John Collins, and Charles Karucci.
Mr. Prisco?
Mr. Chairman, I'm voting for Francis Hensy, John Collins, and Charles Karucci.
Chair votes for Francis Hashi, John Collins, and Charles Karucci.
Based on the results, three incumbents would be reappointed. Mrs. Hashi, Collins, and Karucci.
Okay. Next.
One second, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I move to place a nomination of following names for appointment, reappointment as members of the Cultural Council for a term to expire on December 31, 2017. Margaret Bradbury, formerly, I'd say Baker?
Actually, if I may interrupt, Mr. Chairman, through you to the vice chairman, who I believe is the liaison in the Cultural Council. That is one where I am not certain of the number of vacancies out there. In the event that you are aware of it, then I certainly would recommend we go forward with the vote. But if not, then I would actually recommend that we hold just a- But if not, then I would actually recommend that we hold just to confirm the number of vacancies on that position.
There is no limit on this particular...
Okay.
So my recommendation is that we allow all the members, all people that are being opposed tonight to be...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the first one was again Margaret Bradbury, formerly Baker, 8 Tower Hill Road, incumbent. Carol Jean Clock, 58 Mount Vernon Street, incumbent. Phil Haley, 110 Lowell Road, new. Carolyn Forden, 3 Pasinage Lane, new. Thomas Kelly, 4 Burnham Drive, new.
Is there any board members, any objections to any of these at this point?
No.
Okay. Second, Mr. Prisco?
Second. I'd just like to thank Phil, who is here tonight. Thank you for volunteering, Carolyn and Thomas as well. It's great that we have some new people joining some of our committees, so thank you for taking the time to join the Cultural Council.
All right, seeing there's no contention, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following names for reappointment as members of the Historic District Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2017. Michael, I have a question on this one first. It says reappointment, but there's one new name on here also.
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, again, on this one, unless a liaison is present and more familiar with the membership, I'm actually going to request, because that number's not shown here, that we pulled off on the election.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm... I am the liaison, yes.
So, again, not having the roster in front of me, I'm not immediately aware of the number of vacancies on the commission.
I believe the Historic Commission is open, is an open... I don't think there's a restriction on it.
The town report should have that information.
Yeah.
Well, if I could... We actually advertised in the paper for openings, we do have openings on the Historic?
I believe that we have advertised for all of the positions, whether they were new or for reappointment.
Okay.
Why don't we just hold on that one?
I would recommend that we do.
Okay.
My apologies to the board.
Okay.
Okay, Historic Commission? Historical Commission?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following name for reappointment as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2017. Mabel DeFranza, 25 Bow Street, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foddy, seconded by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous? Water Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following name for reappointment as a member of the Water Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2017. Vincent Ragucci, 167 North Street, incumbent.
Wait a second. Do we have additional openings on the Water Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think we have a Water Commission, do we?
So I think, yeah, I think there's only three members right now.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following names for appointment, reappointment as members of the Library Trustees for a term to expire on December 31. Marsha Bailey, 21 Duane Drive, incumbent. Lynn Parker, 24 Hable Street, incumbent. Sarah Harrington, 6 Hemlock Road, new. Thomas Kelly, 4 Burnham Borham Road, Drive, new.
Michael, do you have a year?
I think that's Burnham, by the way.
I believe they did three-year terms.
It's a three-year term.
Yes.
And that address would be Burnham.
Yep.
I think there were openings, correct? Certainly.
Definitely. When they were here, they were asking.
Right, I think... I know absolutely there's one opening, I guess there is more than one.
There may be more than one, but again, I'm not certain the number of openings.
No, you didn't know.
I'm in the unfortunate position of not having the roster of the entire membership immediately in front of me. So unless the answer is definitively known to a member of the board, I would ask that we just hold off.
All right, we'll just hold off until next, and get this squared away. I should have taken care of that myself.
I'm just going to write on it because I put in the...
And State Elections Liaison?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Barber Stats as the State Ethics Commission Liaison for a term to expire on December 31, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foddy, seconded by Mr. Prisco. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think the last one...
Two more.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Marion McKay as Town Treasurer for a term to expire on December 31, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foddy, seconded by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous? Carmel D, Advisory Board Representative?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mark Christos, Formentus Farm Lane, as the Redding Municipal Light Department Advisory Board Representative to file, to fill in an expired term through December 31, 2016.
Is he the only candidate to come forward?
Yes, I had a discussion with him, a phone conversation with him last week, lengthy one, and very impressed by what he had to say and his credentials, so I recommend that...
Mr. Prisco?
I think it's fantastic that Mark's willing to do this, and it really is, I think, been a big void for us for a while now, not having a representative on it. My question is, isn't it Community Advisory, not the Light Department Advisory Board?
I believe that we verified with Redding Municipal Light that it is in fact an advisory board that they have. It's made up of representation from not only this community, but the other member communities.
Right, but I believe the name is Community Advisory Board. I just, I just don't, I don't want to vote this guy into a board that doesn't exist. I don't believe it's called the Redding Municipal Light Department Advisory Board. I believe it's the Community Advisory Board.
We can check that pretty.
So I just, we just need to fix the motion to add the word "community." It's right, actually, on the sheet. I got it right here. Citizens Advisory Board.
Citizens Advisory Board, okay.
So why don't we just amend it?
Yep. That's it.
Thank you, Selectman.
As amended.
So it's a Redding Municipal Light Citizens Advisory Board?
Correct. I knew we were missing something.
So there's seven Library Trustees?
I'll come back inside.
I don't know.
And they all come due at the same time?
No. Yes. No, no, they don't. No, they don't.
Okay, then we definitely need to know.
Florian Sheehan, Marcy Bailey, Sarah Rell, Mary Ann Lapp, Catherine, Jennifer, now...
They're all on the list.
Addison and Lynn Parker, but this is not necessarily up to... There are two positions that expire on December 14. That's Marcy Bailey and Lynn Parker. Oh, I think we need to get that squared away. So two incumbents. I think that's all there is.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to...
No, there has to be, there is somebody, but the information on the town website's really old.
They were here, I remember them mentioning, but that's okay, we'll get it cleared up.
Okay.
But we haven't voted on the motion yet.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
That's the library?
No, Citizens Advisory Board. We amended the motion to add the words to unanimous.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous, okay. And I think that's it.
Sorry to be picky, but I just want to make sure we get it right.
Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, bear with me just one moment. Thank you. For the board's information, I attached a copy of the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Program application, which has been submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. I referenced this briefly at the last regular meeting as part of our ongoing efforts to focus on economic development planning in the vicinity of Main Street, Route 28, at Route 62. Again, this will complement our district local technical assistance grant to the MAPC to look at the market and demand for potential economic use of those, economic development of those parcels and of the properties in that area. National Grid has contacted me to inform the town that they will begin surveying gas service regulators on residential properties this month to plan for an upcoming replacement program. Their replacement is scheduled to occur this spring, and I'm awaiting additional detail which will be made public once received. But essentially what it involves is that National Grid representatives, National Grid gas representatives will be walking the neighborhoods. We've directed them to check in on a recurring basis with the police department to advise them of the areas that they will be around. They will be looking at the meters on residential homes to determine the type of regulator that's on there and determine whether or not it needs to be replaced. And after they've done that surveying, they will then develop the plan for replacement, which again is scheduled to occur this spring. There'll be additional information put on the town website once received from National Grid, but I wanted to offer this in a public forum so that residents are at least aware that this will be forthcoming soon. We have directed that they identify themselves as well as what will be contractors working for National Grid so that residents are aware of who these individuals are working for. But again, a word to residents to expect them in the neighborhoods over the next few months. As I mentioned to the board via email, I have received a request from Kinder Morgan for permission to access 12 parcels of town property for surveying associated with the proposed Tennessee Gas Pipeline. This is not something that's been unanticipated. In fact, I think we've been expecting that this request was coming. The request is currently being evaluated by town departments at my request, and I intend to submit it for board review at an upcoming meeting. As I believe many of the board members are aware, and some of the viewing public may be aware, there has been a modification to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline route. Based on all the available information that we've been able to review essentially today, we do not foresee that it has a significant impact on the so-called Lynnfield lateral and the route through North Reading, but I await confirmation from Kinder Morgan as to that fact. And I think that that will be important for us, and I'm sure that that will come up during... I believe Selectman Yule will be providing an update on the project itself later on in the meeting. But I just serve this as, to notify the board and the public that we have received a request, and it's something that we're evaluating in terms of impact, and whether or not it's something we would want to recommend to the board or not prior to any decision being made. And I await an opportunity for Selectman Yule and I to meet with the representatives of Kinder Morgan to better understand what they're seeking. When that's scheduled, I'll certainly coordinate that with you, Mr. Selectman Yule.
Thank you.
It would seem to me that before we do anything, we'd like to see an entire map of the pipeline through the town.
Right.
That we haven't seen.
I've made the request for that information. Fortunately, Kinder Morgan has expressed a willingness to provide it, but they have not provided it yet. So I will represent to them that we would want to see these parcels mapped with all of the privately owned parcels that they're seeking to survey before we can make a full decision.
I'd even go one step further, I'd like to see what the FERC says before I'd grant anything.
Well, I don't disagree with that either.
But regardless, permission will not be granted by myself without it being vetted by the Board of Selectmen, given the sensitivities over the issue and the concerns that the community at large has. As Selectman Foddy and Messeri are aware, I have been in contact with the Andover Town Manager, and the Andover Board of Selectmen has established a subcommittee to meet with Selectman Messeri and Foddy and I regarding the issues identified at the last regular Board of Selectmen meeting concerning the intermunicipal agreement. Meeting will be set up in the coming days, where I certainly hope that this will be a forum for us to continue what has the past few weeks been a productive dialogue, and we'll keep the board advised, I'm sure the Selectmen will keep the board advised as well.
So you don't have any proposed dates yet?
Not at the moment. I don't have a date. We had targeted a potential date for later this week, but I'm not sure that that's going to be able to work. As the board knows, and for the information of the public, the Department of Revenue approved the town's fiscal year 2015 tax rate at $16.62 per $1,000 evaluation last week on December 4th. So we are now underway with preparing the tax bills to be issued on or about January 1st.
I wish to publicly thank our town Finance Director and her staff, and the Hillview Commission for their efforts in providing the information the DOR had requested so that we could get the tax rate approved.
Thank you.
Anything you've done yourself?
No, no. They've certainly been carrying much of the burden and working through this, and at the same time working through certainly the software that we're utilizing. So I commend the staff in the Finance Department, in particular the Finance Director, for her efforts. Certainly, your words are well deserved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I may have one additional item to report after holding due business if you're still willing.
Mr. Steele?
Yes. I have three things. The first thing I want to talk about is the meeting today with the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, just to try to give you an update. We, I did send out a draft, and I apologize because some of the information I sent to you was pretty late, because I was just trying to rush to get it out. But the meeting today, we have a drafted letter to Governor-elect Charlie Baker, just like we've done with other officials. And just to give you an idea, and for the benefit of the community, a little bit of content is that they go over the mission, which is to gather knowledge and work collaboratively to provide representation, information to relevant government, public bodies concerning the Tennessee Gas Pipeline project by Kinder Morgan, and the effect it has on our communities. They also bring out that we, across our towns, impacted landowners and residents are deeply concerned about the proposed pipeline, pipeline's impact on their property rights, values, and insurance rates. There is an understandable concern about pipeline safety and risk mitigation. We believe that there are viable alternatives, which was discussed today, and the alternatives should be fully, fairly, and publicly be considered before the proceedings, and asking Governor-elect Baker to consider our concerns. The Tennessee Gas Pipeline, as you know, has new routes that they created that are going to go through New Hampshire, but again, it doesn't impact the lateral route which North Reading is on. But they are looking at, as I said, going through New Hampshire. They also have a proposed, proposal to go through New York for the Northeast Energy Direct. It goes from right New York, right to Drakot, and then one route is to New Hampshire, the other route is through Massachusetts. And that's the Tennessee Pipeline. The other one is Spectra, we spoke briefly about that at our last meeting. Spectra Energy and Northeast Utilities did form an alliance with the Aricua Gas Transmission, which is also in upstate New York. They're going to come down from Canada, reach in upstate New York, and then go down to Connecticut, and then come through Connecticut. That route, or that route, I should say, goes actually into Long Island Sound, and it can sweep around and come up through Everett. And, but all they can come through, through Rhode Island, and then come up into Massachusetts from that route. So there's some activity going on here that we're trying to stay, or the Coalition is trying to stay on top of. One of the big concerns about moving up to, for Kinder Morgan, moving up to New Hampshire, is that might be a false sense of security. is that might be a false sense of security in thinking that the communities will say, "Okay, well, it's not going to come our way," and they wouldn't get the pressure. The concern is that they'll do that and then come back to, make a change with, by coming back to Massachusetts. So, you know, that's it in a nutshell. There's a lot of activity going on, and it's just a wait, wait and see at this point.
So it's this group that we've been monitoring that's sending this letter to the governor? Is that correct?
The Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, which I'm constantly going to meetings along of the TA.
So the letter's being signed by this group that's formulae, or have basically become a formal group, or?
Oh, yes, yes. It is, depending what you mean by formal. We're a coalition. I guess you can say we're, it's more of an independent coalition. We don't go through, we follow open meeting law and so on, but we're not commissioned by the towns. Towns have representation there, as well as many of the commissions that are, you know, like the Environmental Commission and so on.
We voted to be a member, though.
Yes, we did, yeah.
We had a motion, we voted to be a member, an active participant on this committee.
An active participant, but I thought, by the way, I'm not, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head. I thought this was an informal group. They hadn't...
It's formal.
It's formal.
It's a committee.
Yeah.
It's a real organization.
Yeah. I mean, they filed with the state. I don't know if that's what you're looking at.
I don't think that they filed with the state, no. And I don't know if that's even necessary in these circumstances.
They're an advocacy group. I mean, they just, you know, we elected to be part of it. They're advocating for the residents all these times.
Well, they're raising funds and things like that. They haven't done that.
No, they haven't raised any funds at this time.
I read the letter.
They did, okay, good. I mean, this isn't the final draft. There was two things to be added on that line. Any other questions? Okay. Number two, I want to thank Mr. Gilberto for getting published in the paper the snow removal public notice that didn't go through. I think normally it does go every year. In light of the last storm, and probably you can be sure to bet that we're going to have some other storms as well, I just wanted to, you know, reemphasize to the business community about the removal of snow as required in the Bylaw 158-9, that it wasn't a big snowfall, but, you know, there were a lot of people that used the sidewalks, and because when you have seniors, and I mean seniors like myself, versus high school seniors, walking in areas that they're used to walking around, but when they go, in one case, for example, if they go along Eames and then come down Kingston, they can't continue their cycle because the snow is not being removed from the sidewalks. And I really think that it's important that all of us here drive, and it's not an issue for us. Now, I run, but it's not an issue for me because I can walk around it. But there are parents who walk their children in strollers that are forced to walk in, specifically on 28. There are people that walk, actually walk to work that have to walk in the street, so on the roadway there. So I really want to emphasize to the business owners that they make it a point to clear the sidewalks, and there are penalties for it. We have a law to address that. And, you know, I think that that's something that we need to address this year, and I think that we should be proactive in making sure that the sidewalks are kept clear. And specifically along 28, there's only a short section that would require help from the town because it's only by the stop and shop area there that I know of that really needs to be cleared. So, you know, I would hope that the board would make it a point to make sure that the businesses clear their sidewalks. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but...
Gilberto, have we thought about just putting a public notice in the transcript regarding the bylaw?
Yes. It appeared in Thursday's edition of the transcript.
Oh, wasn't it? Okay.
It's also going to be posted on the town website, and shortened version will be posted on NORCAM as well for the viewing public. We are looking at alternatives to get a notice directly into the hands of private property owners, but I don't want to commit to whether or not we can do that at a reasonable cost at this point in time, but it's something that we are looking at. And this is not, certainly, I'm sure the Selectmen are aware, it's not an uncommon situation where the community is generally providing snow removal from the vehicle right of way and from very high traffic areas in and around, generally in and around schools. But the type of model that we have here has been successful in other communities, and it can be, continue to be successful here in North Reading, where we're encouraging participation. And we don't have compliance, and we can look at, even though we have voluntary compliance, we can look at mandatory compliance. But those are things that we're looking at as a result of this first snowfall, my first here, and obviously in the capacity of Town Administrator. And I thank the DPW for being of assistance in this, but we'll also be working with the police department.
Anything else, Joe?
Yes, let me just hand this over to you. This is the municipal yardstick that...
Can have that read by the next meeting.
Yeah. And finally, yesterday was December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. I just want to say, you know, as time moves on, many of those who experienced that day of infamy have moved on, have passed on. And I just want to say that I hope we don't forget that day. And there are those who have lost their lives that day, and there are those who were maimed and crippled for life on that day, and there are many who sacrificed their lives from that day going forward. And I just want to recognize that here because I think it's important because we then had 9/11, and we can't forget these things. And we must continue to teach our children that we're here because of many people before us who have sacrificed their lives. So I just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. Joe?
Actually, I'll say to the Chair, thank you. Just a question to the Town Administrator. Is there a trend with the fires that have been going on with our community and surrounding communities? I mean, I've seen some stuff in the internet, but there is nothing you're aware of being an issue with these ongoing fires?
Nothing that has been brought to my attention, but I could certainly inquire of the fire chief, and he may in turn inquire of his counterpart.
Just seems to be an awful lot of them all of a sudden, but I want to thank the Fire Department, or congratulate them on saving the house on the corner Park Street in Oakdale. That was a pretty fast fire, so they did a wonderful job. I want to give the board a quick update on the J.T. Barry. Weston Sampson is completing the end of the Phase II environmental. They've extracted all their samples, and they're off and on their way, or already at labs to be tested. What I'd like to do is hopefully, when we meet on the 22nd, we'd like to try to give a quick, have Weston and Sampson come in and actually give a report to the board, unless anybody has an objection with that. And then maybe at that time, we'll have some additional information as well in regards to our legislation paperwork. Mr. Gilberto and his staff did a great job drafting it up. I'm in the process of reviewing it and going over it, so we're continuing to move forward. So we'll finish our Phase II environmental, we'll get the results, and then from there, we'll be prepared to make sure all the paperwork's in place to start the legislation process in the middle of January of the new year. And then we'll start the next step after that, which we'll go over a little bit on the 22nd. Anybody have any questions on the J.T. Barry?
Put that on our agenda?
Yes, we'll do that. That's it. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. I find it interesting, Jeff, that you brought up Pearl Harbor, because I was watching the news on the 7th, and there wasn't much said. And then tonight, or not tonight, last night, one of the news stations mentioned something about it, 38th?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it was tonight that it was mentioned. And I just, you know, I said to my wife, I said, you know, there's other things in the news, I guess, but you're right, it's so easy to forget over time. Michael, I was listening to the news a few days ago, and they were talking about, it was focused on thefts of shipments that are being dropped off in household steps this time of the year. You know, and they're alerting the public because there's a lot of that going on, and there was a lot of it going on, I think in Brookline or somewhere down there. But they also mentioned that there were a lot of house breaks in North Reading.
Oh, really? Yeah.
And I hadn't heard much about that.
Are you connected with the North Reading Police Department's Facebook page? In your Facebook? If you aren't, if you haven't, you should do that. They give a lot of warnings and advisories every time there is a house break, and they give information, and then they're also seeking information. I think it's a great resource. They're probably posting twice to three times a day, different information.
Maybe we should make that clear to the public. What is their Facebook page, do you know?
I just believe it's NRPD, North Reading.
NRPD.com.
But it's their Facebook page, and they put out a lot of information on that every day. I see something new come out, so I'll get you the exact name, and I'll send it out to the board.
I think it's facebook.com/NRPD.
Is that, okay.
Yeah.
There you go. But I have seen, they have posted information about the breaks. And I know it's been in the transcript on multiple occasions.
But have there been a lot of, for it to make the news?
Yeah, to make the news, that was nice.
I mean, I will tell you first, with regard to the Facebook page, I'm showing it as facebook.com/NorthReadingPD as a Facebook site. I apologize, I'm not on Facebook, so I'm not...
I'm trying to pull it up right now.
But with regard to, I guess, what might or might not be classified as a trend, I've not been advised of such by the chief, although I will be meeting with him tomorrow.
Just curious as to it being reported on the news, and it just hadn't come to my attention.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask which media that it might have been?
I don't recall. It was either Channel 7 or Fox, one of the two.
So if you're in your Facebook, just put in your search, "North Reading Police Department", and it comes right up.
I look at Facebook about once a month.
It is a good resource, though, for that.
That's all I have. Any other comments before I call for...
We're meeting again on the 22nd. I just want to confirm that.
Waiting on the 22nd will be hopefully the last meeting of the year.
And we have, our calendar hasn't changed for our budget cycle, right? What you presented is...
At this moment in time, it has not changed. I think that we're going to want to evaluate where we're at that first meeting in January, just so that we're all upfront as to the status. Certainly, one of the things that will play in is the timing of the presentation of the strategic plan as well, which I'll talk to you about.
We have a financial planning meeting on Friday.
Correct.
There were a couple of things brewing. One is related to the treatment plan, the high school cost, maintenance cost. And then we have what you read on the front page here, and how, if any, impact will be on our community, but we'll talk about that on Friday. And then we'll report to the board afterward. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Samud.
Motion by Mr. Yule, second by Mr. Foddy. Thank you, Joe, for stepping in this meeting.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me, Mr. Foddy.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm glad you did it because I would have been...